I'd like to reconvene Congress after a recess for engrossment of legislation. The agenda's been amended and we are now on third reading. I had some information come to me just a few minutes ago before I stepped in that we have a bill before, special number, that deals with 1567, which is the Cultural Division Budget. They have sent over a new budget that decreases that appropriation by $15,000. It's up for vote for us right now in front of us, and so I need to know how this body wishes to proceed on this one bill of ONCA 1567. I wanted to give you that information. Congressman Mason.
Question, as we vote, would we be voting on a $15,000 decrease or what was it gross?
The only vote we can take is this engrossed copy right here. The bill would have to be, we would have to take it off of this. This bill would have to be moved. Let me think where we need to move it to. General Order Day Two, when amendments could be proposed to decrease this appropriation by $15,000 if that's the will of this law. Congressman Walker.
Tomorrow?
I think tomorrow would be the right time to do that.
I'll make that motion if anyone else has any.
You need to state the motion then.
The motion to suspend the rule, modify the agenda.
The agenda doesn't need to be modified.
Oh, pace 1567 off of today's agenda and place it on tomorrow's agenda on General Order Day Two. Second.
With a motion in a second, any more discussion to that? In favor, say yes.
Yes.
We will visit this bill tomorrow on General Order Day Two, amendments can be proposed. So we are now on Bill Number ONCA 1555, an Act to amend 19ONC Section 2, 103, and Section 2, 104 of the Osage Fair Minimum Wage Act to remove the exemption for Osage Nation Gaming Enterprises and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Maker is a sponsor of this bill. How do you wish to proceed?
Point of order, we need to report out the engrossment.
You are so right. My apologies. Congressman.
I was confused.
Yeah, I was confused too. I'm sorry. It's been a kind of a confusing day today for us, for me anyway. Congresswoman Pratt, would you please report out legislation?
Rules and Ethics Committee met and the report for ONCA 1555, an Act to amend 19ONC Section 2, 103, and 2-104 of the Osage Fair Minimum Wage Act to remove the exemption for Osage Nation Gaming Enterprises and to establish an alternate effective date. A sponsor is Congressman Maker. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. Bill Number ONCA 1561, an Act to amend ONCR 1408 to allow board and commission travel reimbursement allocations to be available to the board as a whole and to provide an alternate effective date. Sponsor is Congresswoman Edwards. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. Bill Number ONCA 1562, an Act to authorize and appropriate $75,000 to the capital asset and improvement fund for improvements to the Hominy Village Roundhouse and to establish an alternate effective date. Sponsor is Congresswoman. That's, this is not correct on the committee report. Okay, but sponsor is Congressman Maker, and there are two co-sponsors, it's not listed in here as well. Congresswoman Buffalohead and Congresswoman Pratt. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed. Did you have those? Okay, three yes votes for Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. Bill Number ONCA 1563, an Act to amend the Open Meetings Act of 15ONC Section 7-105 and Section 108 to public bodies to use reasonable efforts to list items on the agenda with specificity to allow agendas to be amended inside 48 hours and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congressman Supranon. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. Bill Number ONCA 1564, an Act to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Office of the Attorney General for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $100,000 for Osage LLC litigation expenses and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalohead. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. Bill Number ONCA 1565, an Act to amend ONCA 1467 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Osage Utility Authority Board for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $47,900 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalohead. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon. And Bill Number ONCA 1566, an Act to amend ONCA 1477 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the Division of Land, Commerce, and Public Safety for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $69,943 and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Buffalohead. The final committee action is due pass as properly engrossed with three yes votes from Pratt, Shaw, and Supranon.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Now, we will get back to third reading with Bill Number ONCA 1555, an Act to amend 19ONC Sections 2-103 and 2-104 of the Osage Fair Minimum Wage Act to remove the exemption for Osage Nation Gaming Enterprises and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Maker is a sponsor of that bill. How do you wish to proceed, sir?
Point of order here, now, does this, according to what we heard, was this set back from executive with changes or revised? Is that what I've just heard?
No, what we talked about earlier is it was the bill for the Cultural Division, and we were sent a budget that decreased this appropriation by $15,000. So it's the Cultural Division bill.
It was not.
It was not this one. We're going to visit it tomorrow. This one is before us right now for a vote, and.
I'll split.
You'll split your time? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good evening to Congress. As we all know, this has been a very controversial bill. It wasn't intended to do that way. The intention to this should actually help some of our tribal members who are making a very low wage, in fact, the lowest paid in the entire nation, including those here on the Hill and all our gaming enterprises. I think what a lot of people fail to see here is that this is intended just to give these people a chance to give their families a better life. And yes, we knew there was going to be controversy here, and there was a lot of reasons, and some did, to broke this down. But before you vote, I would please have you just look in your mind and your heart, just like in the square, and every kind of way to care about these Osage people, to care for these Osage people and their families. That's our job here. You can yell, you can look at a graph, a pie chart, all day long, you can make all these changes, amendments, arguments, but when you come down to the Osage people and their families, sometimes you got to look at those people and their families.
Thank you, Congressman. Is there any other member that wishes to speak for or against? Congressman Buffalohead.
Before I started sitting in this seat, for the last five years, I worked with the casino and the Human Resources Department, so I'm well aware of the trends among the casinos throughout the state of Oklahoma, as well as what the trends are out of the state of Oklahoma, just in gaming industry alone. The casinos are winning better, no one argues that. They're the ones who bring in $40 million a year for S to have programs and services, the health benefit cards, scholarship, direct cost and indirect costs, et cetera. It's a hard job. They work 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. When our employees up on the Hill are making $11.50 an hour, and they get vacation time and holiday time, and they get weekends off, and they have the luxury of working in offices that aren't filled with smoke. Some of these people work through the casino because they like it and they enjoy it, and some people do it because that's what's there, and it is the best job opportunity that they have available, maybe due to their educational experience or lack of, or maybe because it's right down the road, or maybe because they offer decent benefits. I can see both arguments here, and I have really been struggling to decide on what my vote will be. And I've heard the argument, are we crossing into the line of the board? The board isn't for this. The CEO that the board just hired isn't for this. They say they're looking into it, they agree something needs to be done, we don't really know when that will be. But the notion of getting into the board's business, well, I don't know. Perhaps you could, you can look at it that way, but in the five years that I've sat here, and I've sat on Commerce now, about over another year, I've heard Congresspeople say, if you don't take this out of annual plan of operations, I'm not going to vote for it. The board has come to ask for things that they want in that annual plan of operations, and there have been individuals that have said, I won't vote for this if it doesn't take this out. How is that any different? I've heard Congresspeople say, I want a hotel, when the board has said, no, we don't want a hotel, but we've had Congressmembers say, no, we want it, we want it. So I think that there's a fine line there. I don't, I don't think that this is infringing upon a constitutional issue. We're making a law that provides for a minimum wage increase for all Osage Nation employees, basically. We left out gaming, and we're putting them in now. There aren't many families that can make it on less than $8 an hour. It's, I would imagine, very difficult. I don't look at this as a piece of legislation where we're supporting only 78, 80 Osages. I look at those other people that this is going to affect, because when they're Osager lot, they're working in that industry that provides the luxuries that this nation has. They're, they're working hard for that, so I'm going to vote yes for this, and I would urge your support for this. The one thing that I really liked about that amendment was that the casino is not going to see a huge hit right off the bat, which they feared they would. It's going to be incremental, which is what the Osage Nation did for its employees, and I think that the Osage casinos can do this.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against? Congresswoman Pratt.
This has been heavily discussed on several occasions, and I just want to say for the record, I don't fail to see that this is trying to make a better, provide a higher income, to provide a better life for our tribal members. I understand trying, I've, I've, I've worked all my life, I worked with children, I went to school with children, I've been in, served in the military, I've worked, I know how to work a hard job with little pay, so I, I can put myself in those shoes, and I know how that feels. But I'm in this seat now, and I have, I do understand my role, and it is my job to look at these numbers and to listen to the board and listen to the executives and all of our gaming industry professionals at this time do not agree with this happening at this time. I do not agree with this happening at this time. I'm not completely against it, I just don't, I just want to give them time to do their job. We rely on our expertise. I am not a gaming expert, and, but I do know how to work hard and have a job that I don't necessarily love that day and with minimal pay, so I do feel for them. But we looked at the numbers, and this affects 600 positions. These are 600 positions, and I asked how many of these people were Osage presently, and the number was 75. So that means at this time, we're going to raise the minimum wage for 525 positions for non-Osages. Also, $11.50 would be the minimum. Not all of those, I believe the number was 60-something that were, it was only, out of those 600, only 60-something was under $11.50. So they could be at 9, they could be at 10, they could be at 11, that's still under $11.50. So we don't know those exact numbers at the time, but I do know that they said it would be $2.5 million minimum, that this would cost right now if this were to pass, and I understand that there's been an amendment, but the point is, is after that amendment was made, or even proposed, the Gaming Board and executives had not had a time, had time to go over that, over those numbers and present those numbers. And a member of the Gaming Board yesterday spoke to us and said that they're just not against it at this time, and that they are in, they do perform studies to make sure that we, that those positions are being paid within the market, and I, I trust them, and as a faithful member of the Commerce and Economic Development Committee for Congress, and also attend all of the Gaming Enterprise Board meetings, I make that promise to stay in communication with them to, to make sure that that study is performed again, as they're saying is coming up, and, and if at that time they make a recommendation that this should happen, then we can always address it again. But I'm not for this at this time, so it's very costly, and I urge you to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Congresswoman. Congressman Walker.
I want to reiterate this in the Constitution. Our 10th Section A, under Independence of Boards and Commissions, says tribal officials and employees shall refrain from using tribal positions to improperly influence the deliberations, administrations, or decisions of established board or commission proceedings. I don't know, and I really kind of don't think this would be unconstitutional, but I do know that it would be the government, again, dabbling in and getting over in our tribal enterprises' business. It's clearly, or clearly would be, we clearly would be doing that. I, I said in committee meeting, I heard one of the, one of the board members was there, stated that they are looking into this, they plan to address it, conduct due diligence, and consider the ramifications. One being, it's just not so easy that everybody's going to be bumped up to $11.50, it's not making $11.50 now. Then if somebody, if they're making $7.50, they go to $11.50, what about their supervisor that's making $11.25? Do they get a $4.50 or $4.00 increase also? Or are they making the same as what somebody on a, with a lot less responsibility is? So there's a lot of things to look at that haven't been looked at, and my heart goes out to those people that, that aren't as fortunate as most of us are. So basically, for those, those reasons, I'll be voting no for this, but I look forward to hearing from the Gaming Enterprise Board to kind of tell us that they've looked at this in a responsible way, and this is their plan and how they implement, and how their plan to implement raising the level of salaries that below-level employees on casino industry do. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Supranon.
This was the best, at least, yesterday, and they already sent it out, but they do not pass recommendations. And the general agreement was that for us to do this, we'd be interfering with the enterprises and always stepping off ourselves and getting involved in their business. The Gaming Enterprise Board representatives here said that they will, they had argument to work on, just get them by surprise. And it doesn't just apply to gaming, it applies to the other enterprises in the nation LLC. There may be a ripple effect even within the gaming that could run the cost way above $2.5 million. We were testing on them yesterday, today, and we don't even know how many people Osages are actually making less than $11.50, or how much less they're making. We don't even know if any are actually making the federal minimum wage. It wouldn't be possible if more than that. But to change your opinion, if ever, if it was agreed upon, I think everyone has to live with wrong, to interfere that much in their business, and then to make an amendment that changed slightly the amount of interference that we're putting on them. I think, what kind of people are we, that we would bend our own rules? It'd be ridiculous to say, well, I actually do this, but in order to do that, it's a dog's sake, but in order to do that, I violated my, our own rules, our own constitution. And here, we're going to have another bill coming up in a little bit, but we're going to appropriate method to punish or pursue people who don't follow the law. We're breaking our own law by, by doing this. I just, I don't understand the thinking of it, and I'm going to be voting against it.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member, Congressman Yett?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Members of Congress. I will not be supporting this legislation for many of the reasons that have been stated by my fellow Congressman in the room. Sitting in the meeting, we were told by the board that they are not supporting this at this time, and they told us that they are in the process of working on a compensation plan, and I feel like, as a body, we need to give them that opportunity to do that. I don't know that we're stepping across the bounds, the boundaries constitutionally by approving this legislation, if it is approved, but I feel like we have a responsibility to allow them, as a board, to make that decision. And this is a costly decision, and it's going to cost a lot of money. We heard a lot of numbers during the meetings of the number of employees that would be affected, the dollar amounts, and I don't know if the numbers are valid. I've heard some of them mention here that there are 75 Osages out of 600. We don't know that those 75 Osages are making minimum wage. They may be making $11 an hour, but it's less than $11.50. So to say that if we don't approve this legislation, we are making our Osage members live at minimum wage, may not be entirely accurate, because they may be making $11 an hour currently. I think there's just a lot of decisions and information that needs to be looked over and popped about, discussed about, and chewed on before this decision is made, because, again, it's a costly decision. We're talking about at least, with the original number, over $2 million. And I don't know if that took into account the taxes, benefits on top of that, consideration of, as Congressman Walker said, you know, an employee may be moved up to $11.50 an hour, and the superior may be making $11.50 an hour, awesome. Who's to say that that educated person who may be an Osage says, well, I'm not going to sit there and make $11.50 an hour doing twice the work as my subordinate who's making $11.50, I'm going to go somewhere else. So we may lose qualified individuals to other industries if we pass this. Otherwise, there's a trickle-down effect where that person that's at $11.50, we're going to have to somehow increase their pay if we want to keep them on board, otherwise we may lose them. So those are things that need to be considered, and I think we need to allow the board to make that decision, bring that to us so that we can make an educated decision on how we want to compensate our employees in the gaming industry. No doubt, it would be tough to live on minimum wage, but I think this board is currently working on a way to resolve that problem, and I think we need to give them that opportunity. So I will not support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Hamilton.
Like Targigan said, I see both sides of this, but just like everyone else in the room, I want the best casinos around. With all due respect to the board, we have heard about compensation and bonus packages for a while now. I know I have, since I've been on Congress, and I don't believe it has changed. For them to say they're looking into it and working on it, it's been a year now, and I haven't seen anything new on it yet. So with that being said, I'm supporting this bill, and wish you a good one.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill?
Members of Congress, we, we talked a lot on this bill yesterday. One of the things that, that came to mind that I asked questions about was what level of discussion did we have with the Gaming Enterprise or the executive management of the Gaming Enterprise before we just decided to legislate $11.50 an hour as their minimum wage? And what I found out, there's no dialogue or no communication had happened previous to the filing of this bill. If we're an nation that wants to move together, prosper together, help benefit our people together, then we need to make decisions together, or at least try, in the beginning, to come to the table and say, hey, this, this is what I want to do. I, I'm concerned about the pay scale of our nation's employees that work at the casino, and here's an idea, I'd like to get them to the same level, and start that dialogue. When the Gaming Board found out that this legislation was filed and slated to be put before this body to vote on, they had to scramble and try to figure out, it changed their plans. They had to scramble, and they had to figure out, they had to start crunching numbers, they had to try to start figuring out, how is this going to affect the operation that you've charged us with overseeing? You've put us in our seats here. You've put us in our seats here. I'm not opposed to the minimum wage raising at the casinos. I am opposed doing it in a way when we don't communicate, that we don't try to figure out what's best for the people instead of forcing a bill, a piece of legislation, a law on people to comply. Sometimes that might be necessary, but in this case, I think that the way our government set out with the structures of the Board, the executive legislature, and then we get a board enterprise, I believe we need to honor that. That's how our document sets us out. And if we can't communicate and we can't have dialogue between these entities of the nation, it wreaks havoc, and that havoc spills over all our people. I will support the Board in any type of a wage issue that they think they need to raise. And I wanted to add one more point, that we were told yesterday that the people that are making minimum wage are tipped employees. And this legislation in section two dash one oh four, part of its section in B, it says, contract employees and the following, and there's the following exception, a tipped employee defined as an employee engaging in occupation in which they customarily and regularly receive more than thirty dollars per monthly tip. Those are the people that are making the bottom of the wage, those are our tipped employees and they're exempt from this legislation anyway. I would not be supporting this. I would be doing my due diligence to make sure that our Gaming Enterprise Board, because I am on that committee, that will serve the compensation study and package. Thank you.
Any other member wish to speak for or against? Congressman Maker, you have the floor.
Thank you Madam Speaker. Let's have some cutting out on this. I knew there was going to be a lot of opposition, a lot of negativity, and it was. I mean, I've heard it in the committee meetings. I've heard grab high charts numbers, they don't deserve it, or we want them to have it, but not right now. Well, please don't come and tell me that later on if this is voted down, because if you don't know, you're telling me, you don't want these people to have a raise. You're taking the possibility of those of these charities that will give them more food on their table, and make them go buy themselves a better car to get to work. You've got to understand, these people are making this low wage, they're having a hard time here. I mean, maybe we're so, so high up in the clouds, you've forgotten about how some of these people are having a hard time. And I don't like being accused of breaking the Constitution when I've been to legal people and found out there is no danger of breaking the Constitution here. All this is doing is trying to help our people, and maybe the high charts says there's not a big group of them who are OSA agents, they're going to be helped by this, but they are employees of our nation. And they are making the revenue to make all this possible. So, I urge you, please, look in your heart and help these people. These are OSA people, OSA families, they have children, they have committed to school. I mean, this is not designed to hurt our Gaming Enterprises, our casinos. Yeah, they may have to press some numbers to help these people, but that's their job. And those people are helping us with all our issues of our health cards, our bail assistance. Everything we're doing for our people is coming from this Gaming Enterprise. So please, think about these things before you don't know on this, and I know a lot of you are going to. But please don't come and tell me later on, oh, I want them to have a raise, but you just want them to have, because if you don't know, you're telling me you don't want these people to have those. Thank you.
The question is, shall ONCA fifteen fifty five pass? Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yack?
No.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
No.
Congressman Pratt?
No.
Congressman Shaw?
No.
Congressman Suppanoff?
No.
Congressman Walker?
No.
Congressman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
No.
The bill fails. Next bill on, the agenda is Bill Number ONCA fifteen sixty-one, an act to amend ONCR fourteen oh eight to allow Board and Commission travel reimbursement allocations to be available to the Board as a whole and to provide an alternate effective date. Congresswoman Shannon Edwards. Congressman Maker, this is the type I hear, is the sponsor of that legislation. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll oppose.
Any other member wish to speak for or against ONCA fifteen sixty-one? Seeing none, the floor is yours Congressman Maker.
Thank you Madam Speaker, Madam Congressman. This bill is a pretty sample, but all it's doing is changing some of the wording and making a talk for some of the Gaming Board to use some of their travel funding as a core, rather than just delegating a certain amount to each one, because a lot of those Board members do not travel, and then once they do, do you have to do a lot of driving sometimes? And so, that's all this is intended to do. But not just for any, no kind of increase, just to change the way they use their travel and those. I urge your support on that.
Thank you Congressman. The question is, shall ONCA fifteen sixty-one pass? Congressman Yack?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suppanoff?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congressman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes.
The bill passes, but also has an alternate effective date on that. Is there any discussion to the alternate effective date? All in favor of the alternate effective date, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the alternate effective date is ONCA fifteen sixty-one. Okay, we passed it, all similar to the normal mode. Okay, we are now on Bill Number ONCA fifteen sixty-two. It is an act to authorize and appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars to the Capital Assets Improvement Fund for improvements to the Harmony Village Roundhouse and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Maker is the sponsor of that legislation. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll oppose.
Are there any other members that wish to speak for or against this bill? Seeing none, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker, Members of Congress. As we know, this is an act that is going to, is very badly needed to preserve some of the culture of our people. So, it is to protect, preserve, for future generations of our people, the last existing roundhouse of our nation. It's kind of a symbol, I've said a lot of times, of the past of our older people, building once you built that roundhouse. And a lot of people now will go down and say, well, what is that? You know, it's kind of an archaic building, but it was built by our people, or us, and it's needed to be preserved and protected for future generations. And this is just the beginning of legislation that is going to help to preserve that for us. Thank you, urge your support.
Thank you Congressman. The question is, shall ONCA fifteen sixty-two pass? Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congressman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suppanoff?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congressman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yack?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes.
The bill passes. The next bill that we have on third reading is ONCA fifteen, alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to it? We're going to go on alternate effective date. All in favor of it, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No, seeing none, alternate effective date passes. Now on Bill Number ONCA fifteen sixty-three, an act to amend the Open Meetings Act at fifteen ONC, section seven dash one oh five and section one oh eight, to public bodies to use reasonable effort to list items on the agenda with specificity to allow agendas to be amended inside forty-eight hours and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Shaw, Congressman Suppanoff is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll open.
Okay. The floor is yours, sir.
This bill was introduced with just a attempt to allow, in committee meetings, the discussion of items that may have come up that weren't on the agenda. They were, it allowed them to discuss it and not take action on it. That was the original intent of the bill as I introduced it. After I introduced it, there were amendments made to it, so maybe others would like to talk about those amendments, and I won't speak anymore on it, because what I amended is in there now, but there's a little more.
Thank you Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against? Congressman Shaw?
Thank you Madam Speaker. In an attempt to avoid sounding like a broken record, referencing my remarks earlier today, I'll try to hit the high points, because we have a lot of legislation, a lot of facts, a lot of figures. And this started as a bill that then had a committee substitute, then had an amendment, and just once again, there was a specificity piece added earlier in the spring that required public bodies and their agendas to state their business to be discussed or transacted specifically. Neither the name of this, she couldn't discuss the business of the Enterprise Board, and not really know what they meant. You could have a generic agenda that said the same thing every time, just change the date. So, that was an attempt to do that. Also limited discussion of transaction business only to items that were on that specified Elsewhere in the law, this pre-existing was a notice to provide the agenda and the notice of the meeting forty-eight hours in advance. And his opinion, and I reluctantly agree with him, of our legislative council, that we should not be amending agendas within a forty-eight hour period. The intent of the law, as he interpreted, was that we need, that we were not to be doing that. That the law did not, was not the intent for law to allow us amending it up to one hour before the meeting. And so, Congressman Suppanoff's original bill had to do with taking the piece prohibiting discussion out of it. It's still only limited to voting on or transaction business only on items that were on that specified agenda. Then the committee substitute took out the specificity piece, but also introduced a piece that allowed the agendas to be amended within forty-eight hours. Then there was the Shaw Amendment that puts specificity back in, but it also described in greater detail, which is in section H, that says, "Public bodies shall make every reasonable effort to state agenda items with specificity pursuant to the information available at the time the agenda is initially published." And to update those agenda items as additional information becomes available, is what we've been doing anyway. So that's really not new for us. I would say it's going to be new for some of the Boards and Commissions, some of which have already began doing that, as of July first. So, again, for the same reasons I mentioned this morning, I think it's good for the transparency of relevant business, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? The question is, shall ONCA fifteen sixty-three pass? Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congressman Pratt?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Suppanoff?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congressman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yack?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes.
The bill passes, it has an alternate effective date on it. Is there any discussion to that? The question is, shall the alternate effective date pass? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, alternate effective date passes. Next bill on third reading is ONCA fifteen sixty-four, an act to provide a supplement of appropriation to the Office of the Attorney General for fiscal year two thousand fifteen in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for OSAH LLC litigation expenses and to establish an alternate effective date. Congressman Bucklehead is the sponsor. How do you wish to proceed?
I'll oppose.
Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Shaw?
Thank you Madam Speaker. My understanding that so far, we have authorized, committed, or appropriated up to about one hundred and seventy, one hundred and seventy-five thousand into this OSAH LLC litigation effort. I'm not sure all of that's been spent, but this request is for another hundred thousand to fund litigation efforts to find out, expose, and bring to justice people who were responsible for these huge losses that the nation sustained in the past years with LLC operations and investments. There's been discussion about, well, you know, is this a good investment or a bad investment? It's an investment in sorts, and I still believe our constituents want justice. You know, how much can we pay for that justice, even if we don't get a nickel back? I'm not sure that there's a formula that you can calculate that amount, that sort of rests in your debt. And the Congress knows how much the business of the government costs, and so we have to put that in there and we try to decide which the proper amount. I'm good for another hundred thousand. I'm not good for six hundred and seventy-six thousand, but at this point in time, I'm good for another hundred thousand. I consider that if that's an investment in just justice for our people, then I'm for it. I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill? Congressman Norris?
Madam Speaker, Members of Congress. I believe that, I remember when we were campaigning, we were some of the, a lot of people that were always campaigning with me, there was a question I asked, about, I think it was leading into this, how we would proceed if we were elected in office, would we support prosecuting people that do wrong to our association? Because in the past, it seems to fail that businesses or whatever would move in on the reservation and reap the benefits of having a business in the nation, and the nation supporting their business, and their business fails. There've been some allegations of wrongdoing, mismanagement of funds, or just plain outright theft on the nation, and nothing was ever really done to hold these people accountable. And I think that we need to start somewhere and make an example of people that you just can't come in and steal funds. If there's a possibility that we can go in, I'm not saying recover a vast amount of money, but we ought to punish people that come to us and take from us, because they take from not only us, they take from our children and from our reservation. So, I support adding money to this litigation, and I urge my... So I support adding money to this litigation, and I urge my fellow congressmen to vote yes on this.
Thank you, Congressman. Congressman Walker?
I'll keep my comments short. Glad Congressman Shaw brought up the $677,000 figure that was brought up the committee the other day that was initially anticipated or requested at one time. I'm with him. I'm good for another $100,000 at this time. I think it's important to note out, Congresswoman Bucklehead may very well have brought this out, but I think it's important for those that are listening that didn't listen the other day. It was pointed out due to the efforts that have been ongoing as a result of 150 or so thousand that we've appropriated so far. Just within the last few days, there's been $140,000 located in an account that is in process to be sent to the nation as a result of these efforts. So it was pretty close to a wash. The effort of truth and justice is underway. I look forward to bringing those people to justice and finding out the truth of what happened to the money. Everybody wants to know, including us. And so at this time, another $100,000 is what's before us. I hope that results in more truth, justice, and additional funding coming back to the nation. So I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for? Congressman Supranov?
I'm, instead of voting about the $100,000, I think that we need to, I'm not sure if I was staying for $600,000, but I think we need to pick our battles, and, but we need to send a message to the people around us and the people within us that wrongdoing and theft on the nation has been done, that we're going to be dealt with, and it's going to be worth the price. And we can't ignore it. We've got to send a message, a clear message, that we're going to defend ourselves. I look at a certain investment in that as, we don't have armies anymore, but we need a national defense budget to protect ourselves against all the kind of crooks that come in our head. I guess American Indians has had more lives thrown around than any people on the face of this earth, and those sort of measures have been wrecked off, whatever kind of crook that you can think of. It's, we've got to send the message to the outside world that that's no longer going to be a profitable enterprise, and the people that have, places where we've lost land money and mineral rights has been perpetrated against us by people that we thought were there to protect us. And we are the board of 400 guardians through the years, and we just got to stop that. And I'm in this for another $100,000 and even more, but I want to caution against, it seems to be, in the Congress, we seem to be divided in two banks. One has, seems to have a feeling that you have to have a guarantee of recovering everything we spend. In our system of law, there are no guarantees. We, if there were, it wouldn't be there in our impartial system of law. So we need to get ready to spend some money, but we do have to use some good judgment on how much. Well, I'm going to base it for it.
Thank you, Congressman. Any other member wish to speak for or against this bill?
Members of Congress, I am for watching out for our interests. I am for people not taking advantage of us. And in my opinion, it starts with us, starts with the people we put in the places in these boards to watch over the money appropriated to these entities, and for them to put competent people in place that's going to take care of our Osage Nation business. Starts here. I think that at the current time, the current LLC board is that. I think they're doing a lot of work. I think it's up to us when an entity comes and wants a capital contribution, for us to thoroughly vet what that presentation is, what they need that money for to spend if we think that it's a good investment for the people of the Osage Nation. I am for trying to recover some of these funds that have been lost, but I've also had the privilege of being in some of the meetings where questions were asked about recovery of assets. I know that litigation costs money, and I'm willing to invest money on litigation. Personally, I would go into litigation on a civil case, I would want to know from my attorney what's the possibility of recovery, because that's what a civil case is. A civil case is the possibility of recovery of funds. So when I would spend my own money, I would expect to know what the return on that's going to be. And if I just had the money to prove a point, I would do that. I would have that decision to make with my money as well. So when we appropriate this, and I'm going to support this appropriation, because I asked as a congressman, talk to me, I want the constituents to talk to me, and the constituents that have talked to me said, "Support this appropriation." And I represent them, so I will support this appropriation right now. But also, another facet that's happened to this legislation is it's been changed and it's in the hands of our Attorney General to look at the cost versus recovery. That decision's going to be hers, and I'm very comfortable that she will make the best decisions for the Osage people. She knows we're looking at her performance in that. So I will support this legislation right now. I am for justice, and I am for recovery. But I think that we need to go into this with our eyes wide open, especially on civil litigation. And the cases that are going to be filed, that this money is going to pay for are civil cases. There's no, at this point, there is no criminal cases being formulated. I'm not going to say that that may not come out of this civil discovery, but I want everybody to be clear, there's no criminal prosecution at this time being looked into. We are still going through the civil process. Thank you.
Any other member wish to speak for or against? Congressman Bucklehead, you have the floor?
I surrender my time.
The question is, shall ONCA 1564 pass? Congressman Norris?
Yes.
Congresswoman Frat?
Yes.
Congressman Shaw?
Yes.
Congressman Supranov?
Yes.
Congressman Walker?
Yes.
Congresswoman Bucklehead?
Yes.
Congressman Hamilton?
Yes.
Congressman Yett?
Yes.
Congressman Maker?
Yes.
Congressman Mason?
Yes.
Speaker Whitehorn?
Yes.
The bill passes. There's a matter of an alternate effective date. Is there any discussion to that? All in favor of the alternate effective date, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Seeing none, alternate effective date passes. The next bill, Congressman Yett?
I'm going for a 10-minute recess so I can take care of a personal issue real quick.
Second.
Second? Okay. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
We are in a recess, 10-minute recess.